Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome participants to the virtual planning board meeting of March 21st. Just a call to order. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio?
Hello.
Ms. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you.
Mr. Olney is not with us. Ms. Tenny?
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a quorum tonight. Like to remind all board members to be asked to recognize the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. And at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Sarah Creighton for the discussion items. Sarah?
Yep, thanks. Just really before we start, I want to just remind everybody that we have a site walk tomorrow at 5:30 at Harold Street, if you can make it. And also Sue, there's, I just want to say a word about the Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow night.
There is, the Board of Selectmen will be holding the community forum on the 40A regulations, law and regulations, starting at 6:30. So that will be a presentation, maybe 20 minutes or so, questions and answers, and I hope lots of folks will attend.
Okay, great. And then for anyone who's here looking for the public hearing for LCD changes, or this is not a public hearing tonight, you're welcome to be here and but we're not taking public comment tonight. We are, and we're not talking about the, at least in any, making any changes to the changes to the LCD zoning. There will be a public hearing on that next Monday at 7:00 PM. So this is a working session. So the agenda for tonight is to talk about a few different new things. I'm gonna start actually out of order and talk about some of the issues on previous zoning changes. I'm hoping we can get through that pretty quickly. Gary had asked while we were waiting about those. And I went back through all the notes and all, and the predominantly the January 31st meeting that we had, and we had put a bunch of things in yellow to come back to because we were tired and they didn't. So I think we can just resolve some of these. Some of them are just, you know, we may have differences of opinion. We just need to figure out what language we want in the proposed draft language that would then be reviewed by public hearing. We can then discuss it further after the public weighs in. This is not a final vote by any means, but I really want to get the stuff up on the website. And with all these, a few of these like unresolved things, it, it's not terribly productive to have lots of colors and that kind of, so does that make sense to everybody? Without further ado, I will just share my screen here. And hopefully we can get through these. And what I'd like to do is have, is Mark Bobrowski coming tonight? Sue? Did you hear from him? Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I mute his down below my ribbon for some reason. No, I did not invite him. I did not know that he was anticipated to be here.
Oh, okay. Thought we talked about that last time. Okay, no problem. So we may have to refer some of these to him, but I don't think they're that pending. Um, so the first one, these are all in sections one through three, and I think we can then get a, so I put in red what I'm hoping we can do tonight. And I think this is a kind of a another two differences of opinion about whether the purpose of the zoning includes implement the recommendations of the town's master plan as adopted by the planning board. So I'll take a motion to include or not include that, whichever. I'd actually, I think an affirmative vote would be helpful because otherwise we have to. Yeah.
I'll move that we we adopt the implementing the recommendations of the town master plan as adopted by the planning board is one of the sections of 1.1.
Okay, great. Thank you. Discussion. Oh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'm hearing that. I think we can do the, do we have to take a roll call vote, Ron, on every one of these things?
Yes.
Okay, Ron. Ron, yes, Gary?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Christina?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next one. I see that Steve Rosenthal has joined. Just remind you that Mr. Rosenthal, this is not a public hearing. And if you're looking for the LCD hearing, that will be next Monday. So. Okay, then the section two, we had a bunch of questions on definitions. And as Chris and I went through this, we suggest adding at the start of the definition section, something that says along the lines of the following definitions shall apply. And when definitions in section two are in conflict with other sections of the bylaw, the definitions in the relevant other sections shall apply. And that's because we're still in a hodgepodge state of affairs here. And we may find that we have failed to include definitions, or there's some sort of a conflict. So that was our proposal. Maybe I can get a motion to adopt that language, then we can discuss it. Chris?
Sure. I'll move that we adopt the language that when a definitions in section two are in conflict with other sections of the bylaw, the definitions in the relevant other sections shall apply.
All right, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Ron, thank you. Okay, I'm just, any discussion or concerns? And there may be a better way to word this and, but Laura, go ahead.
I'm just wondering about the use of in conflict. If this was a another sort of contract document, one would supersede the other. So are we trying to say that section, the other relevant section supersede? Or that if we missed putting it in section two, that they shall apply? I think we just want clarity on whether one definition supersedes or not.
I think my, my thought was that the relevant, that the, the definitions in the body would supersede.
Okay, so we could either say the
Section shall, shall supersede.
Oh, that seems okay. Or we could also just say if they're, if they're not in section two, the other definitions will be, will apply. Sort of two ways of saying not quite the same thing. I'm I don't feel strongly.
Okay. And maybe we can, in maybe if we can get the latter, I think everybody's in agreement. Well, well, that we
Mary has her hand.
Go ahead, Mary.
I might have missed it, but I don't recall seeing a final draft of the definitions that were kept in and the ones taken out.
The section, the material on the in that file is the latest, the, the ones that I referred to you in the memo. So that is the latest. Well, this is again for the, for public hearing. I don't think we took, we, we didn't agree to take anything out except for pervious surface or something. So I think it's the same.
I thought we had agreed and Mark Bobrowski concurred that we should take out anything that we don't actually have.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that in a little bit. I, we did not resolve, that's on the unresolved issues. So senior housing, for example.
Um, no, I mean, just for definite, definition sake, for like, you know, drive through and things like that.
Okay, let's table that and we can certainly, as we move forward with the addition, next step, let's revisit that.
So this, this won't be going, this will
No, I can't, unclear if this is going to be at a public forum before we discuss again.
I don't think it has to be, but I want to, so I want to get it on the website, but that doesn't have to be the last time before the before the public forum.
Okay. Are you asking about this paragraph that we're talking about or something else?
I think she
Asking about the whole definition section.
Okay.
Yeah, let's stick with it. Thank you. Let's try to stick with this. Any other discussion on this topic? We may have to wordsmith it a little bit more, but okay.
I would restate the motion now that we've changed the language for clarity for Sharon. You know, let's, let's, you know, we, we've seconded a motion and I suggest we
That, right.
I'll accept, I'll accept the revision.
Yeah, thank you. Ron, you accept the revision?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, okay. Um, Contractors Yard, this issue about note, this is in 4.3.3. I'm going to delete that note right now because Chris is looking at that. That's a different topic. So this was a discussion we had about, this is under definitions, not under permitted, not under, it makes no statement about whether it's permitted or not permitted, and whether or not you need to have the two acres. That's the 4.3. So this is just a definition. Is there any additional, any edits to this? Might be able to do some of these together.
Actually, I did check on the definition of a contractors yard. And it's actually the building center in Gloucester is a contractors yard. So it includes, it can include stores, retail, storage of lumber, building supplies.
But then retail or storage or retail kinds of things would have to be allowed in the district, the relevant district, if that was the case.
Yeah, just, it's just that the definition should probably include a contract. I mean, all those things because that's the legal definition.
Legal?
We have.
Yeah, that's what I looked up was the legal definition of a contractors yard.
But I think, I think legal can be whatever you decide it is in your document.
Well, I guess that's true.
A regulation.
I guess we could say for the purpose of, for the purposes of this bylaw.
Well, that's what, that they're in the definition. So by definition, by that's redundant. That would be, you know, that's in the definition section of our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm, let me just look and see what the next one is. Oh, yeah, next one's dicey. So let's
Was there an issue on the, on a refrigerated truck being parked in a yard that had the motor running all night? Was there something, was that something that someone brought up?
Yeah, that was an issue around the, that, that's also in this 4.3.3 about what's allowed for commercial vehicles. So that's not in, that's not a definition. So do what, any, can we?
Sir, do we allow contractors yard somewhere? That's my, my next question.
Yeah, that, that 4.3.3 is that by right if they have two acres. So it's a different question than the definition of a contractors yard. Again, this isn't final. This is getting it to the public. Or two, we can, we can revisit again, once you look at it again, but getting it to the website. That's what I'm trying to do is get this to the website. I'm going to suggest to me, we don't have to vote all of these. I'm going to ask, is there any objections to this language at this point? Ask Laura.
One word, and it might be a nuance, wield, wield or track, T R A C K.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any objections to this? I don't think we have to vote every one of these because okay, hearing done, I'm gonna say, okay. Um, all right, this one is a little bit, Chris, I think somebody brought this up last time, the dwelling.
Just, just going back on that last one, Sharon, so Sarah, so Sharon, there's no motion on this, so
Right.
We're just including it.
Yeah, yeah, saying we've got, I'll put consensus. And I'm going to actually add to the list of things to come back with is look at the, the where contractor yards are allowed. Okay, I'm sorry to I didn't know how else to do this. So the question became single family dwelling, and this is our definition, a single family dwelling is a dwelling for occupancy by one family. And that came up last time. Family comes up a couple of times. So Chris and I also in this, then in the subdivision rules, let's see if I can show those two together. In the, this is, this is the proposed definition that we got from that draft eight. A privately or publicly owned permanent structure containing a dwelling unit or dwelling units in the term family. One family and so forth does not include hotel lodging, hospitality, hospital membership, et cetera. And then so Chris and I suggested that we have a definition of a family, which is a family as a household living together in a single dwelling unit. And then I suggested that we combine this subdivision piece, which is enclosure containing this sleeping kitchen and bathroom facilities designed for and used and held for ready use as permanent residents that I, and basically what I proposed is combining the two. So that the subdivision rules and our zoning are in, am in parallel. Does that make sense? So I was trying to get at two things. One is what's the definition of a family? That's what I proposed here. And then the second is to have our zoning and our subdivision rules be consistent.
So Sarah, does the family definition then go into the definitions?
Yes.
Okay, that seems good.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so the action here would be to add family and modify. Um.
We also have, we have a definition of household also in already in the definitions.
There is not a definition of household in the
Really? I thought we had one.
Nope, I checked. But I mean, we want to add household too. So any, any objections to that suggestion?
I think it sounds great. Thanks, Sarah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, height of a building. Um, we went around in a scary, I apologize if I went through your emails and I couldn't find you had said that there was a different definition and I'm sorry I couldn't find it. So this is the height of a building is the vertical distance from the mean grade existing ground.
It's different, Sarah. It's I had it not too long ago. It was, it was something we had discussed and we voted on and approved. And it was something I had a long talks with the building inspector about. It's a, the agglomeration of points at every 20 foot intervals, if I remember correctly. Can we just revisit that this later? I didn't realize you did not have that language.
Yeah. So let me ask the consensus that I think that Gary is trying, the definition that Gary has proposed is to have more points along the, where the building and the intersects the ground, particularly because Manchester has such varied topography. Is that correct, Gary?
Yeah. And, and after a lot of research and a lot of different definitions, the building inspector suggested is maybe the simplest way to really capture it. I can find the language right now. If you want, you want to come back to it later on tonight?
Be great. If you can come back to that, that would be great. I'm going to put that in green. Thanks. Lot frontage. This came up not in our meeting, but came up with a, in a conversation about actually one of our potential A and Rs, that our subdivision regulations and our proposed zoning have slightly different language. I don't think they say much difference. So given that subdivision exists, I would propose that we just go with the one that's in our subdivision rules.
I agree.
Think to the extent we can make things consistent.
No, I agree. That's great.
So is there consent?
If we go back to the last one too, I guess the height, did, did the building inspector bring this up in the many meetings that he attended? I don't remember him saying that, Gary.
Sue's nodding yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And maybe it was voted before my time, but it has not been voted since my time.
It was voted. I'll find the language. There's a better way to do it, but it's a math formula that made people afraid. But there's an actually very, very good definition that I don't find very difficult, but nonetheless.
Okay. Let's stick on this one for a minute. Lot frontage. So any objections to using the one that's in the subdivision rules, word for word?
I agree with you.
Sarah, can I just ask a quick point on this? And it's probably nothing, but just looking at this quickly now. The subdivision regulation says coinciding with the street lines providing rights of way when we're, we're looking for lot frontage. So it just seemed plural in the subdivision as opposed to singular in the draft.
I agree, Mary. I don't think this is a very, it may be in the subdivision regulations, which are, but I don't think it's a better, I don't think it's a better definition. I think it's a more confusing definition and it calls out that it's a potential building site. It might not be. I think it's
That's true. Subdivisions are a potential building site.
Yeah, they have kind of one idea in mind. So I think your previous one is more to the point and less confusing.
Okay. I don't have a strong feeling. I just, it had come up.
I'd just like to point out that where it says where they intersect the street infers that if you have a serpentine shape to the street, all of that distance is part of your frontage. It's not a straight line between side lot lines. So I
It says following the angle or curve of the
Right. So the first one works well for that regard.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, so do I have a consensus that we should just leave it as is?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Restaurant. We had two questions here. I think the issue here was that with the, the part we, last time we said was two thirds of its legal capacity are for booths or tables. And it's intended for indoor sales and consumption of food prepared on the premises. So given, there are two issues here. Christina in the, so had asked in the issues document, I went through that and pulled all those issues out and asked if this includes ghost kitchens. And so we might want to talk about that. And the other issue is how, I think the intention here is to not have drive-throughs, but given, you know, what we went through with COVID and how many, how much takeout there was during that period. And in some places like Dunkin' Donuts or some of our existing facilities, if they were to be replicated, they might have less than two thirds of their booths, the, the food that they serve is less than, is less than two thirds of their total food served or something, but the
How do you determine its capacity?
Yeah, this is, this is based on legal capacity. So that's based on square foot per, and how many and how many people you can serve in that. So that's, that is a, that's already something that's out there. And any, any restaurant has its capacity based on its square footage. So
That's not how much your food you're serving, all right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So this seems okay then? Are we trying to, is there concern?
I think the question was, should we include language to include a ghost kitchen? If we have another resurgence, do they, can they use a current facility without serving?
Well, without serving, even if they had the capacity to serve is two different things, right? So and I think that the pandemic, it should not be the basis for discussion here. Tell me what you mean by a ghost kitchen. What is a ghost?
So actually, I'm, I'm trying to think of the restaurant in Gloucester that closed. It was at Serenity down near the water. They closed and actually two gentlemen Yeah, exactly, latitude. So they closed down and two gentlemen from town took over the space and they're doing meals to go. You can prepare them ahead of time, pick them up. They'll actually deliver within like a five mile radius. So I mean, it's the same idea, but there's no eat in. So they're preparing the food. They're creating organic, you know, meals. They have a different menu every day. I don't know, in my opinion, if we have someone that wants to use a space, I don't see the problem with that if it's
But that's not a restaurant then. Isn't that become a, isn't that use a catering kitchen or a retail meal, you know, ready to go retail sales as opposed to a restaurant? So what we're trying here is, what we're trying to do here is not regulate the restaurant. We're trying to find it.
And I think that other use would be allowed anyway. I think that our language is such that a food is, it's called a food establishment. So which is different than a restaurant. A food establishment is more broadly. And I think would include the ghost kitchen as you're defining it, Christina.
So yeah, ghost kitchen might be catering or it might be some
Well, it's not because there is a storefront. There's no tables is the difference.
But it, they could be selling jewelry in that same space. And then the question is, is a jewelry store allowed? Not, is, I think the, the question here is, is this the definition of a restaurant? And I think you're describing more of a sell, sailing, selling food or catering kitchen, which might be a different thing, which is a different, might or might not be a different thing. I think. Okay, I'm going to undo the yellow so that we don't forget that.
So Sarah, two comments on this one?
Yes, absolutely.
Just minor. I'm not sure why we're clarifying to be consumed outdoors in landscape terraces. I don't know that they have to be landscaped. And I I think it's singular adjunct, not adjuncts, a junk.
I don't even see the word.
You know, adjunct too.
Thank you. I literally is copying this out of, thank you. Okay. As for the definition of restaurant, do we have consensus that this now works for the purposes and any objections? Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, and the R's and the S's already excellent. Um, the story, we had simply just highlighted this. I think it was in the S's and we were tired. And so we said we'd come back to it. So I think, I don't have objections to it, but it was among, it was we had highlighted it. So tell me if you have any discussion and otherwise we'll move to consensus. Okay, any objections?
Is this a new definition?
This was in the Mark Bobrowski version. And we looked at last time. It's not defined in our existing depth.
I'm not sure it's ever, it's actually regulated. It's more heightened stories anyway.
Right.
Sarah? Yes. Yes?
I found that definition. If I could share a screen, I could show.
Yeah. Hold on. Let's finish this.
Yeah, whatever you're writing.
Why, yep.
I just want, so Chris, to your point, doesn't our current definition say two and a half stories or thirty-five feet? So, that this would come into play with that. And I don't know that, like we, if people have homes that are two and a half stories, I don't know that they're only four feet, the half story. Does that make sense?
It whichever is low, the two and a half stories can't exceed thirty-five feet if you happen to have big stories. It's still a thirty-five foot maximum.
Right. But are you saying in this definition that a, that a half story can only be four feet?
Oh, yeah, because the ceiling is seven or eight feet. So, half of that is four. That's how you get there.
Right. Typically a knee wall.
So, you've got the four feet on top of the two thirds of the floor level below it. So, it's four feet plus the two thirds of the level below.
Yeah.
And that mimics the state, the building code definition. It's pretty similar.
Can I suggest that we double check this against the building code and, and if there's a conflict that we resolve that?
I've done that research in the past, Sarah. It can vary from town to town whether they have four feet or five feet. Four feet is more restrictive. That floor area is included in your calculation.
Okay. I'm gonna just say, can I, any objections to saying consensus for now?
Why don't you say yes for now unless there's a solid reason to change it?
Yeah. Well, we're gonna just double check with the building code. I think that's strategic.
And this definition actually came from our height, is what's in our height regulations. We just moved it from there into definition. So, it's what exists, it's what is existing in current regulations.
Okay. Great. Okay. Wow, I think we're on the yards. I think it's like the end. A portion of the lot. Unobstructed artificially from the sky. This, we just, you know, was at the end of that night and we said we would come back to it. So.
So, I have a very small nitpick here, which is you should take the comma after lot in that first sentence. Portion of the lot upon which a building is situated. Otherwise, it sounds like you're you're trying to have the front yard where the building actually is.
Yep.
Alright, so I think with this point, my question was, can you park in your yard? So, if you can park in your yard, then it's not unobstructed artificially, right? So, this is my question.
Yes, that's right.
You cannot park in your yard.
You can park in your front yard.
But I think it's unofficial. Okay, so the I think it's
Your driveway is gonna be in the front yard by definition.
But that's what I'm, so can you turn your whole yard into a driveway?
I don't think that's the, that's part of the definition of yard, whether you, about parking. It's not, yard is not parking. This is just the yard. And it's a dimensional portion of the lot.
This is, yeah, this isn't about what's allowed in your yard. And I think, let's assume that this defines your yard when no one's home.
I don't think it's a very elegant definition. From the ground to the sky. I haven't seen that language in other, in other codes. And a court is, that's strange. What if your, what if half of your rear yard is paved, not has pavers or something? You might call it a, a court or there could be a forecourt or an
Do we have a, do we have a definition of the word court?
It's a strange term to use because whether it's, whether it's got pavers in it or whether it's enclosed by wings of the building, it's still gonna be part of your backyard, for example, or front yard.
It's not making any statement about the material. It's just not defined by the building.
I'm just trying to guess what they mean and it's not clear what they mean.
Oh, this is we. This is us. These are us.
I think it might have come from Mark. If he feel, it doesn't seem like it's a state of the art language to me.
It, it did come from Mark, I recall.
So, the, so let's, let's take it at a time. Are we all comfortable with this unobstructed artificially? Even though that we could or couldn't park there. That's separate. I think I'm comfortable with that.
What does artificially mean?
Like with a building structure.
Does it mean pavers? Does it mean gravel? Is that, is that artificially? What does that mean?
I think they're referring to canopies, like parking roof, open air roof structures.
I don't want to presume. I kind of want to know what this means.
I don't blame you.
Okay, so are unobstructed with
Call it open space.
That's better.
On the definition of yards, open space.
So, I have yard means an open space on the zoning lot, which is unoccupied, unoccupied or unobstructed by any portion of a structure from the ground upward.
That's fine.
It's better.
I like the artificially though. I don't know what it means, but I like it.
It, it means not by a tree.
I would rather say
Not a tree.
It doesn't have built structures is better than unobstructed artificially. I mean, this is about where there's a structure and where there's not a structure.
Right. I agree.
I could say unobstructed by any portion of a structure.
So, other communities, and we've tried to talk about this in the last two years, actually put a portion of the yard that has to stay not artificial.
But that's a regulation. This is a definition. We want to stick to the def, what we're trying to do is define us. So, I think this is saying yard is not.
It's not a building.
There's a portion of the lot which
I liked artificially. I, I think it should stay. I just don't know what it means.
I don't like it.
I think we should strike it. I've got another definition here if you want it.
Not a tree canopy.
Hold on, hold on. Laura, what did you think? You're looking at somebody else's definition.
I'm looking at planning.org, yards, the open spaces on the same lot with a main building, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward. Except as otherwise provided, da, 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 da. Front yard, open space extending the full width of the lot, the depth of which blah, blah, blah. Rear yard, open space extending the full width of the lot. Depth of which is blah, blah. Side yard, open space between the main building and the side lot line, et cetera.
Okay. And where's that from?
Planning.org. I'll put it in the chat.
It seemed to me that as you read that yard, that front year, rear and, and side are pretty, were pretty consistent, but I liked that, what they said there on. I can't see the
I think they just substituted, yeah, open space, which makes it more clear that there's not a
So, the open space on a lot.
The open spaces on the same lot with a main building, comma, unoccupied, and this is, the comma is important. Unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward, except as otherwise provided below.
Not quite, not quite, Sarah. Open space on the same lot, not on the same building.
And spaces on the same lot with a main building.
There you go.
Right.
From the ground up.
Or, yep, or up. Except as otherwise provided.
What does except as otherwise provided mean?
In this ordinance. And then they go on to say what a front yard is. They define front yard, rear yard, side yard. That's all in the chat, just defining the points outward to which you measure.
Let's take out the court because it's computer.
I would take that out. Take that whole sentence out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna show it to you with simple markup.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
Yep.
How about?
Did we want to say unobstructed by, how did this one say? It was like unobstructed by a structure? Because this just kind of leaves it open. Unobstructed from what?
I don't think we should qualify it anymore. From the ground upward. Then you don't get into structures or materials.
Yeah.
Freezer not trees.
That's true because structure also has a definition.
Right.
Oddly enough.
Okay, my, again, our purpose here is to get this to a public. We certainly have time. We can certainly think about this. Further, but do I have a consensus that we can move ahead with this as described here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any, please speak up. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna put markup back on. So, we can see. Okay, oh. So, toxic material. At the last meeting, we agreed on any substance or mixture of chemicals as defined by federal or state law. That's, we took out all, this was in, in there. And then when I was going through things, I was like, oh, section five ten has this bizarre, and it's formatted just like that. Sorry. Just to make it even.
It was a late time meeting.
So, in the simplest way here, we could vote to delete section five ten point two. And Laura, you had a suggestion that I, a mixture of chemicals or
I said basically, I, I think that chemicals is, limiting it to chemicals is too limiting to us toxic substances. And if we want to, if we're trying to simplify, if we think that's important, I also looked up definitions. I came up with the same thing that you're seeing. And I said, well, then maybe we just keep that first sentence under the, the first, the paragraph.
Yes, I think I agree with that.
Asbestos would fit in.
Right.
Exactly.
So, that's what we would have then. Sorry, I'm gonna make that the same size so we can read it.
Should I say or as defined by federal and state law, just in case?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think so.
Clarification.
Any substance or mixture of such physical, chemical, infectious characteristic as to pose a significant actual potential hazard to water supplies or other hazards to human health if such substance or mixture were discharged to land or waters in this town or as defined by federal or state law.
So, comma after town.
Yes, thank you. So, and that also, can I just, wait just one second, Gary. The, the other comment that Christina had made, I believe, was, on this one was PFAS. She had said, what about that? So, I think that, that this in a sort of high level way, as PFAS become regulated, they, this would include that potentially. And you could make a case. So, I think it helps us in that comment as well. Okay, Gary, you had something on this topic?
At the end of it, where it says or as defined by federal, why not say or defined as toxic or hazardous material by federal or state law? Because it's not clear enough.
Though, I think it should be as defined because toxic is actually, there is a, is a subset of these other broader things. Toxics are toxics. There's like threshold quantities and certain listed chemicals. So, I think it's better to be broader. So, for example, wastes is, are a mixture of substances and they're, they're called out down here as specific activities, but wastes can be a mixture and they're not, they're not raw chemicals. So, I don't think, and I think we can vote to delete this five ten. I don't think it helps us. So, let, let me take them separately. Do we like this new definition? Okay.
Classes are included that they are regulated. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, the second thing is
The other thing is, I guess, we want to make sure that Massachusetts is more stringent than federal in this particular situation with the PFAS. We want to make sure that that's clear.
Good change, defined to regulated if you think that's stronger or as regulated by federal or state law.
Is defined or regulated?
So, the argument then for the PFAS could be that it's not regulated as a federal level, but it is regulated state. So.
So, it's an or.
Yep. Federal or state law.
Yeah. I mean, if it's regulated by state law, it's regulated by, it apply, the regulations apply. This is simply a definition.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So, then the second question here is, do we want to put section five ten two on our list of things to delete? And I recommend we do.
Yes, please.
I think it's too much. Yeah.
Okay, great. Any objections to either of those things?
What about the last sentence for the people that do need them?
What this waste?
That's an out for the Board of Health.
Those can be regulated, like dry cleaning fluids. That's probably
Regulated.
Yeah.
I mean
Are you thinking there may be things that are not regulated?
I think
This would cover?
So, this is a definition. This is, I think that if we had an activist board of health or activist sports selectmen that you could, there could be some abuse to that, I think. This isn't about the Board of Health's authority. I think that if it's a, if there's something injurious to the public health, the Board of Health has authority, I presume. But this is a definition of toxic material. As is five ten two. So, I don't think it helps us. Does anybody want to, can I, are we, do we still stand with our consensus prior?
I kind of like the airplane service and repair business.
Yeah.
No, I think we should delete it. I think it's
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's, Sue, just a reminder, we need a zoning map designation. We don't have to resolve that tonight, but it's on the list. Trying to keep everything on one list. And then lastly, we got through this and
And Sue had a comment.
Oh, sorry, Sue.
No, I was just gonna say, what further do you need as a designation?
I need an official way to designate that, that map. Because right now
Title, title.
I don't think, I don't know.
Oh, just a title, a reference.
Reference, okay. Because it needs to go in there because we have an old map reference.
Yeah.
I did, I did ask that question. I have not gotten a response, but thank you.
But it's a reminder. Okay. And then Alan Wilson, I sent him an older version and he asked this question. I don't think it's So, I just made a screenshot here. All decisions shall be made by the majority of the board as constituted. And he said, is as constituted, should it be as elected?
So, Laura, Laura and I would both say, well, wait a minute. What if you're appointed?
Right. That's what I think. I think we should just leave it as is.
I agree.
To make sure that we, trying to use the process I set up make sure, okay, good. Let's, any, any objection to leave as is?
I don't, but is it different number of copies in different places? I thought it was ten prints of the plan. I could be wrong.
I would think that that should be something that should be in regulations and not in the bylaw because it can change.
Right. And we know, we don't even want all those, these
Right.
Yeah.
We should, I think we should scrub the, I think we should scrub that and put those types of things in regulation because you can change it as you want.
Yeah, okay. I want to put it in the other, the other category. Okay, while I'm doing that, I'm gonna turn it, let me just number of copies. Okay. So, the, okay, good. Thank you. We got through So, the, okay, good, thank you. We got through a lot. So the next step on one through three will be to put these changes in, and then I will post them on the website. And I know it's been hard to find all the documents. I think what I'm gonna do is make a sort of an archive folder, and sometimes that's important, because we, we've made a bunch of changes, and people like to go back. But I will let you know how I organize this, and if anybody has some good ideas, let me know. But I'll probably put a, you know, a folder for public hearings, is I think what the, the way to do it, is a folder in the stuff that says for the public hearings. And then combine everything else in archive with subfolders. So the problem is SharePoint is a little challenging when you move things around on folders. Then you can't find things. Right, you know, nodding, Laura, right?
Oh, I find in SharePoint that if I click on the wrong spot in a document, it's said that I had changed it or something. I'm like, whoa, I didn't touch it.
I know. But it, it's what we have, and it, part of the problem is we're all using different versions of Word. That's another problem. But anyway. I think, stick with us here. I think when we get a little bit further on, I want to put them all in one, all these changes in one document, a single document for the public to download as one thing. John, we might be pretty close to. Okay, let's talk. Stop sharing for a second. Chris, you want to talk a little bit about? Thank you for getting through that. The next thing we're gonna talk about is the residential cluster and the senior housing, which I know there was a lot of discussion about prior to Laura and my joining the board, me joining board. And so, and I realized when I went to look on the files, that the formatting, when I added the line numbers and SharePoint gets, SharePoint doesn't like the, the line numbers. So I have a clean copy that we can look at. But, you want to pull that up?
Sure, if you can pull it up. So, the, the conservation, the residential conservation cluster was provided by Mark Bobrowski. The current bylaws got three different ways of approving clustered housing. There's the PRD, there's a large scale development, and there's a conservation cluster. So Mark picked, he picked bits and pieces of all of them and turned them into a single regulation. And basically, what it does essentially is allows waivers for certain setbacks and lot sizes and so forth. As a way of saving open space. And the basic density of the overall number of units is the same as it would be for a regular subdivision. So there's no, for a typical conservation cluster, there's no additional units. But there are some bonuses, up to 20% of the additional units could be provided for either larger amounts of open space or for affordability. So if up to 10% of the units were made affordable with rent, with deed restrictions, then there could be an additional up to 20% additional units. The way the law currently is written says that anyone who provides, makes more than, I think, eight units has to designate 10% of those as affordable.
Six.
Six units, I'm sorry, thank you. But Mark says that's essentially illegal, because people have the right to build the same number of units. We can't be penalizing them to make them affordable. So he suggested this bonus incentive to gain affordability. So that's what's in the conservation cluster language now. So we can go through it. It's, it's pretty much the same as what's in the laws now. There are some tweaks here and there, which I haven't noted, but. I think the way, I think the way to read.
Let me just. They'll tell you that, so I'm pulling up this because it's easier to read. The one that I've shared with you for tonight's meeting, I think, has the same language, but has been changed to section 9.2 and references the correct, this is, this one is pulled right out of Mark Bobrowski's, I believe. Chris. He sent, this is what Chris emailed you. So, and I, it's easier to see, because I had line numbers in the other one, and it's hard to read them therefore. So the first pro, and then the other thing is that I realize, just at 6:20, that the definition, we do not actually have a definition of a residential conservation cluster in our section two. Or section 11, or any other place. So.
Is it defined in this section 8.2?
It's not defined anywhere. In the new draft eight, Mark Bobrowski. So a definition needs to be written, unless it exists in the old zoning.
I don't believe it does, but it might.
So that's a, that's an important thing that I don't think we can handle tonight. I think, Mary, you look like you're looking it up, so that'd be good. So I think tonight, what I wanted to do was to introduce this and the senior housing, and get any big picture. You know, big picture things, and also to get a sense of whether we want to try to include this and the senior housing in the work that we do for the June town meeting. So, on those sort of big.
Sarah, this, on number three here, you have a number four in number three. Is that?
This is just right out of.
Yeah, the numbering is, is off after you go after three.
Yep.
And Chris, you said a bonus for extra housing units that are affordable. Wasn't there also a, a contribution instead to the Affordable Housing Trust as an also a bonus?
That's in the current law, and we could include it in this. I don't think it's written in it now.
I see. It's not there, okay.
No, I think it was, actually. It goes to the affordable house. So, that, that.
Affordable component.
Here will be granted, let me make this bigger, sorry. So the affordable, the subsidized housing and the right of first refusal goes to the Affordable Housing Trust.
But there's no cash contribution in lieu of creating the units.
Oh, so there's no, yeah, compliance payment or something, right?
Yeah.
That's something we may want to consider, I.
No, I don't think so. Try to incentivize affordable housing.
Well, of course, the money, the money would go to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Well, the, the trust is kind of doing it.
But it's, but it's very, it's, it does not usually pay for even a fraction of a unit. So, a lot of, a lot of trusts are trying to get rid of payment in lieu, because they end up with money that, instead of housing, and it doesn't convert, it doesn't convert easily, so. Yeah.
We're giving a lot of money, the CPC is giving a lot of money to that trust.
Careful.
You know, they got a lot of money going there.
We could almost buy a house now.
Well. So, okay.
A lot of money. Anyway, okay, so let's, so I, I made a note at the top that we need to change the numbering. We know that, and this, I had the other one, other version that is hard to read is, has that, but also we need to have a definition. Let me, is this something we want to advance in June and let the voters decide? The other, that's a question. Let me ask, also can say that I think that this bylaw needs to have a delete section, whatever it is, that's the current section of this bylaw.
Yeah, motion would delete.
Concurrent with that, delete. So this needs to be, okay, Mary, you have your hand up.
Well, did you want to discuss the bylaw, or do you want to discuss if we should?
I'd like to discuss the big picture and any specific big picture things. I think that there is probably a fair amount of editing that needs to happen, and I think that we can't do that. That's not my intent tonight. I don't want to spend the time to do that tonight. I have a, I have an idea about how that could happen, so.
Yeah, some big picture things would be that when this was last discussed, there was a lot of conversations, so I don't see that anything's actually been incorporated into this yet of, of what the planning board discussed and feedback from residents. And there was also, we were going to get examples of how this would impact in districts, you know, seeing how it impacts in District D, in the general district, and District A, you know, what, so we were gonna have some sort of real life examples to see how this would look and how it would kind of play out. Personally, I have a lot of issues with the way this is currently written. It's a drastic change from what we currently have. We currently require five acres. It's going down to twice the district size. So if you look at, say, District D, that's a 12,000 square foot lot, and then you say you could have as many houses as you could have if you had the, the lot amount for that district, so you could do four houses, and then you've got these things that Chris was just mentioning, density bonuses and incentives and things like that. And so with some of these scenarios, I'd like to see, is that five houses? Is that six houses on 12,000 square feet? It's giving the planning board a lot of say in reducing setbacks, which could drastically affect the butters, I think. There's lots of language I don't understand. It says, offers significant amenities to the town, infrastructure improvements, equipment or technical assistance for preservation of land. I don't even know what any of that means. It, it doesn't follow our normal parking rules that we've established in our parking bylaw. I don't know why we're gonna forego that. The contiguous open space, our current bylaw is 60%. This goes down to 20%, and then it can get reduced further. Then it says that if, if there's open space, it's for public use, I guess, are people allowed on this land? And then it says in certain instances, the town will start maintaining the land. Like, there's just so much to try to figure out in this.
Well, Mary, Mary.
I think it'd be a tough.
I want to, I want to stop something right here. There is no additional density in any of this. If you're allowed one unit on 12,000 square feet of land, the, the conservation cluster is gonna allow one unit. That's it, one unit. It doesn't change the zoning number of units on, on what's required. All it's saying is that if you've got five acres, and you're, and you're in the C district, then you can put all those, and there's a hill in the middle of the lot, you can put those houses in a cluster around the hill, instead of, instead of trying to crash into the hill to make a, like a shingle hill kind of a thing.
So what's the density bonus?
The dense, so then you can get 10% more units. So that means if you're allowed five.
20%.
20%, I'm sorry, 20% bonus. If you have five units allowed, if you're gonna give us more open space or make an affordable unit, you get one more.
So that's what I'm saying. I'm doing an example in District D, so I'm saying that could get you up to five. And then, is this irrelevant to ADUs? Could you do ADUs on top of it? I don't know.
I don't think it's got anything to do with AD, yeah, sure, you could, I guess you could have an ADU, sure.
So I'm just saying, I mean, the, the point was asked, you know, for feedback, and so I am giving my feedback. I think there's a lot.
I think you're making, I think you're characterizing this as some sort of cramming units into small parcels of land, and that's not what this does. And I think, I think if you, I just want to make that clear to everybody. This is not any kind of, except for the 20% bonus for things that we want, it doesn't make any change in the zoning.
So here's putting, no, you're putting words in my mouth, and that's unfair. I'm, I'm reading.
I was quoting you, I was quoting you.
Section of what the bylaw is, and so I'm just trying to be factual. If we had examples, we could, we could discuss and go back and forth with real life examples, but, and I didn't say we're trying to force density. I'm saying in a real life situation, I'm looking at this, and that's how I calculate out. If you can calculate out something different for me, I'd love to see the example. So I don't know why, why there's an argument if I'm trying to say my concerns with the bylaw.
Okay, so let's stop, that, the, let's look at the language here. The maximum number of dwelling units in the residential conservation cluster shall not exceed the number of lots which could be reasonably expected to be developed upon a site under conventional plan and full conformance with all zoning subdivision regulations, et cetera. So then there's a density bonus of 20% of the maximum number of units. So if there were five units allowed, you would all be allowed six in for the following reasons. Excuse me, I'm gonna sneeze.
And it's a may, it's a may. It's not a given.
So, oh, okay, so just in terms of your question about, and Chris's point, that this does, does not allow, this allows up to 20% of additional bonus for additional open space and additional affordable units. So. And at 10%. Max number of units plus any density bonus shall be restricted in perpetuity. So, so I think you're both right, that there is a additional units than what would be allowed by zoning. But it's for the, for those criteria, okay?
But I do think it would be helpful if we could get those examples. I don't know if it's Bobrowski, if it's town staff, that was going to put together scenarios so we could, so we as a board could see it, but also residents could see it.
So, can, maybe that we could, as a next step, make a table of a couple of different districts, and what the, what would be allowed without the residential cluster, what would be allowed with the residential cluster and a density bonus? It seems like it's a pretty simple table.
And I might add, it's already, this is already allowed under our current zoning.
So this.
Chris, but you need five acres of land first.
Yeah, you need five acres. So in most, so you're talking about, in the residential E district, you've got two units.
Well, but I, but that's, that's a big leap from five acres to, you know, depending upon what district it is. And, and so that's why I'm, I'm trying to, as we're supposed to, kind of flesh this out. You always have to work, look at best case scenarios and worst case scenarios and figure out the middle.
Okay, Laura, comment from you.
I'm in favor of the residential cluster zoning. We may not be able to get there by the June meeting, but I do feel strongly that it deserves talking about. The reason to do it, I, I'm concerned that a, a simple table illustrating five versus six units on some plot of land doesn't illustrate the benefits of it. The decrease in impervious surface, the more efficient use of land, the decrease in sprawl, which is what this thing is all about, which is to preserve more land and more valuable land for ecological purchases or open space recreation, so that the same number of houses are having a smaller footprint on the land, and then there's more land preserved for public benefit. And requiring less roads, you know, less sewage, infrastructure, all of that. And so simply illustrating it with a table is not gonna get us there. It's really a spatial consideration. And so perhaps we should all be looking, maybe we should go tour a planned unit development somewhere, or get examples and educate ourselves collectively on, you know, the, the benefits and whatever, and answer any questions there may be about it. I, I have been looking up definitions. I found one, you know, it's pretty bare bones. I can put in the chat, but I think we could continue looking up definitions if we wanted to define it for the time being.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Christina?
So I think the idea that we talked about before is getting some of these examples, and I don't think it's in District E where it's spacious. I think the concern is going to arise in District D, where you have a. Think the concern is going to arise in District D, where you have a large lot in District D, and you're going to change the fabric of District D with some of these bonuses on a lot that has double the size, and that's not unreasonable. And now we're going to talk about EDUs on top of that, like you're, you are changing some of these more densely populated areas by changing it from five acres to double. So I think seeing worst case scenario is important.
Okay. We have, I'm just going to interrupt for a second. We have several people who've just joined. I just want to make sure you are not looking for a public hearing. That's not what we're doing tonight. We're just getting taught, we're doing a working session on patrol zoning changes that may come before the town in June. The next public hearing will be next Monday. So, okay, um, is that Sue? You have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say that it definitely is a spatial exercise, and I I'm sure there's, I could, I could do it, wouldn't be elaborate, but I could show a number of, you know, some changes, some cluster development in any, in any of the districts to show what could be developed. I mean, the size of the houses are not going to be known because you won't know until that's proposed. But you could just show some examples of how they might be arranged on a property and therefore maybe see the benefit of those comparatively, but it would basically be a block and a block and outline of a lot scenario. It's not going to be a illustrative design, although maybe others on our board, on your board have that capacity. I don't know.
It's a reasonable thing to sort of do a couple of scenarios is what you're saying.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think so.
Ron? Nope, you're muted.
I'm sorry. We have, the the planning board has approved three of them, and there's one in District G where Cresto used to be, if as an example. There's a cluster in there. There's one at Summer Hill, and there's one at Sir Village, all site plan reviewed by the board in my tenure. So those are three examples.
Gary.
Ron, thanks. That's exactly what we need to hear. Do I understand this correctly, that you need at least five acres of land to do this?
Currently.
Currently, yes.
Currently. That's huge. I mean, District D will never see that.
The proposed change changes that. The proposed.
Changes it to what? To what?
Double, double the size.
Double the required.
Double the required size.
But you also, okay, double the, double the required lot size, but you also would need, if my math is correct, at least legally to be able to put five units in. What?
You, you, depending on the size of the lot, you, whatever the size of the lot could legally support with a subdivision. So if you're in D and you could legally support an acre and a half, and you could create a subdivision legally there, then that's how many units you would have.
But if you're in a district that requires a half acre per house, wouldn't you need to have two and a half acres so that you could put legally five units in any, if you have any less than that, 20% of it doesn't give you an extra unit?
Yeah, and you don't have to ever, you never have to go to the map.
I'm not saying you have to. I'm saying you couldn't get any benefit out of this unless you can legally build.
Correct.
Can I, so I think there is a benefit for the town in that you could cluster the units close together and and hope and have open, you know, as Laura said, if there's a, if this, this five half acre lots have a hill in the middle, takes by Rock Hill.
Sarah, that's not my question. I'm just trying to iron out the facts first before we talk about the benefits, because there's tons of of literature on clustered zoning. It's been around for decades.
So my being the, the benefit, you said there are no benefits. Okay, go on.
Saying that, I interrupted you. He wouldn't get, the developer would not get one extra unit unless he can build legally five units. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's a pretty, there aren't that many examples that in town, although Ron pointed a few out, but to me, that says a lot. You you need a lot of land to be able to legally build five units.
But Gary, in District D, you only need 6,000 square feet for a two family, so you could have 12,000 square feet and have four units.
You could do that now, Mary.
You. Open space and provide.
But you're, you're.
Provide multifamily.
But you're not, and again, I'm not, I'm not arguing with any of you. I'm just trying to say my stance on this is that then we're also saying we're going to potentially give you density bonuses. We're going to potentially reduce your setbacks. We're potentially reducing your parking requirements, you know, on and on and on. And again, you have to look at, all right, if if even, you know, 20% of District D did something like this, that would fundamentally change the the look and feel of District B and District B that abuts that. So, you know, cluster developments, I think, are a wonderful thing if you have the right lot size and you are actually getting some open space, but if you're only going to require, what's the percentage? Like, it went down from 60% or 20% or something like that, like for a 12,000 square foot lot, you know, you're talking about 240 square feet. I mean, it's not like you're getting a lot of open space. So I think it has, you have to look at the district, and I don't know if it's, if it makes sense to do a broad swath over every district.
Okay, pardon. So that, so it is a special permit, is it not?
It is.
So it's always a special permit. So if it didn't make sense, if there, if there wasn't a fragile environment, or if you're not getting a benefit from it, from the design, then the board does not have to approve it. So that's where the, that's where it gives you flexibility if it makes sense on a lot. But you're not, you're not required to give this. This is a not as, you know, by right allowance. So it really allows the board to make that determination and do what's in the best interest of the town.
And I was trying to make the point, you're not talking about a six or 12,000 square foot lot. You're talking about a 30,000 square foot lot, five lots in District D or whatever the math works out to.
You only need 12,000 square feet in District D to build four houses.
That's the case now, Mary.
No, I know. That's what I'm saying. You're not going to get a great open state benefit.
Let's, so let's, let's figure out what our next steps are here. I think what tonight, the purpose was to introduce it. I would like to move to, I don't know, ask for motion. I'd like to push this off, and we're going to review it. And then we're going to have to have a, probably have to have a vote about whether or not we're going to move this forward in June. We don't need to do that tonight, but we had not yet had, at least since I've been on the board, had a conversation about it. So unless, I I think Sue has offered to give a few spatial examples of what this might look like, and I I see a value of a little bit of a table with with maybe pros and cons as a discussion for this going forward. And then we also need the formatting and the definitions that Laura has put in the chat as a starting place.
So Sarah, could I ask that we get a spatial examples, but we also get number examples? I mean, some people look spatially.
Yep. So I think that will help clarify the what's currently allowed and what, what the new, what this proposed, it's not new, proposed might do. With that, I'd like to jump to the senior housing proposal. Let me first share, if I can find it. We do have a definition, the the proposed language from that was, that was drafted, does first say, we have to define it, and it seems most that the definitions are actually quite important to the proposed senior housing. We do not currently have a senior housing by a section of the bylaw. Is that correct? Everybody?
Correct.
Okay, so this definition was suggested in the definitions that were in that draft date from Mark Bobrowski. And it looks to me like most of them refer to state law. And I'm not, Hamilton has quite a well-used, I guess I would say, senior housing zoning bylaw. It has been used quite extensively throughout Hamilton, different lot sizes inhale available, different availability of land in Hamilton and Manchester, but nonetheless. So that's what the definition section in our section two says. Basically, using state law largely as to define long, long-term care, senior housing is for people over 55. Continuous facility is an assisted living, continuous care, it sort of lumps them all together, and that there's a section of senior housing laws. So with that, let me go to the senior house, sorry, scroll through, sorry. Don't try to look at this. That's all, that's all. Sorry, let me unshare for a second. Um, I have it here. I had it open, sorry.
Can I just jump in what?
Sure.
Can you begin why you're doing that? Because those definitions do not line up with the purpose statement in the senior housing. So I think we got to merge the two, because this says to create home health care, housing, and other supportive services. So I'm not sure how that lines up with that definition you showed.
Okay. Okay, so this is the one that has.
You're not sharing.
First, we're seeing your elephant.
Oh, sorry. Nice elephant.
It is a nice elephant.
All right. He's very senior. Okay, so the purpose is to provide alternative housing for seniors. And Chris, I'll let you kind of walk us through this.
So we just, we did discuss this with Mark Bobrowski. Essentially, the, what this would allow would be senior housing by special permit. And all of these are, they're requirements and design standards. I don't know. I guess we could just go right to questions and people have their comments.
I think we should, one of my comments, sorry to interrupt you, is that we should strike it from the limited commercial district until such time as we've had the discussion. Well, actually, that's, we should have a discussion about whether this should be allowed in the limited commercial district at this moment. So that would be one piece of this. So so this gives us a little bit of relief for this, set some stand, I guess, some design standards, setback from residential dwellings.
These, these would be in addition to what would be required under this, any kind of special permit, in terms of performance standards.
So in this case, if we had a larger lot or that would be a single house lot, this would give you the ability to have one of these senior types of housing. Might have collective housing or a nursing facility or under by special permit.
Yes. I don't think a single house lot would be large enough, but yes.
Well.
A single house lot would be.
Um, to me, I'll just tell my, Ron, you wanted to speak on this. Oh, you're muted.
Mary had her hand up ahead of me.
You can go, Ron, if you want to.
I just, I just saw something on this transportation services. Are we going to require that if the housing's in town? I mean, is this a must thing? I'm just thinking there may be some, we should maybe melt, maybe melt that down a little. I don't know. It's my thought.
We could. It could be just a taxi service available to people.
I see.
We could also have it be May.
Yeah, it could be May.
Eric, can you put the definitions that you have? Can you put those in the chat? Is that something that you can do easily?
It's kind of a lot. Let me go, let me put them back on the screen. Can you see that? Zoom some doesn't, doesn't like, did the definition show up?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what? Let me just. So. So I think if I, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So I think what Hamilton is struggling with is the just plain senior housing. And with the purpose, when we talk about to provide housing which is affordable, I think we need to define that, because I think the the development that's being proposed on Chewbacca Road is not affordable. It's actually luxury. So I think we need to learn from that lesson if we truly want affordable housing to make sure that we define that clearly. And I'm not opposed to opening this up to the LCD. I think people would rather, if it's going to be a large scale assisted living facility, that might be the best place for it versus a tear down within a community. I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about that yet. Those are my two cents on that.
Okay. Mary, go ahead.
So hopefully, everybody doesn't jump on me for this. So I'm all for senior housing. I do not see any clarity in this bylaw. I can't tell from the purposes. Is this houses? Is this assisted living buildings? Is this apartment buildings? Is this, so when I look at home health care, that's somebody that just comes into the home and helps with either getting meals or getting people to doctor's appointments. That that doesn't define a structure. Housing is houses and other supportive services. So I don't know what this defines. It your definition gave it gave an age restriction, but the bylaw doesn't. Is this 62 plus? Is it 55 plus? I have no idea what it is. I agree with Christine with the do, are we, what's affordable? That could be anything. Other communities that have senior housing bylaw, I've seen that they've said no more than two bedrooms, so that it really is for seniors. I see that they say master bedroom is on the first floor, so that it's conducive to seniors. I've seen that it says outdoor facilities designed for universal access, so they can, you know, for wheelchairs, for walkers, all that kind of stuff. I think, you know, this might be a start, but I I don't really even see much to this bylaw, so I would hope that we could go back and give it more clarity.
Laura?
I I also picked up on the affordable word. That could be, it just needs further definition, because I think we want to encourage both affordable housing with a capital A and the possibility for senior housing, which, if you have an income cutoff, many seniors don't qualify for affordable housing, but they still need housing, which is different from large, single-family houses than with with more care provisions. Just a quick response to Mary's, Mary, you made a lot of good comments about more definitions. I think that second, you know, limiting. Just a quick response to Mary's, Mary, you made a lot of good comments about more definitions. I think that second, you know, limiting to the first floor would create some unintended consequences for sprawl. You can have a lot of elevator served buildings where there are second or even third stories where you're still talking about basically stacked apartments that can be, um, of a, of a contextual scale. And then I, I'm, I'm looking at this. I mean, we've just talked about the cluster housing, and I wonder if there are some of the things that the residential cluster housing is doing, which this is not doing quite as well yet. It's asking you, for instance, to set aside ten percent of the lot area for common open space. That's really not much. Um, so maybe we want to see if there's some way we want to kind of merge these two, but there's a, there's a senior housing aspect to a residential cluster. Uh, so those are some of the questions I had sort of talking out loud at my first reading of this.
Okay. Um, yeah, hands up. I, I would like to add, um, my own comments on this one. Um, and that I think we would be very well-served to have a bylaw that encourages fifty-five plus or sixty-plus, um, housing with and without an affordability component. I think that, um, there, as Laura said, that there are a lot of people who wouldn't, might not qualify, who have lived in Manchester for a long time or, um, not that we would, couldn't restrict it to that. Um, I think, uh, the other issue is ownership, whether it's, um, common ownership or and maybe the definitions have that, um, it's, and, um, so I would suggest, um, okay, so that's my comments, then I'll, then, um, I have some suggestions about what we do next. But other, any last comments? I would like to keep.
Gary's gonna hand up.
Gary has his hand up.
Um, I agree with a lot of what was said. I, I, um, I think we as a board, it's about time, we don't have the wavelength right now to deal with it, but we need to start developing a consensus as to what our town feels is affordable housing, because I don't think anybody likes the state definition. Um, I would just throw out there, we probably would all like sixty percent AMI instead of this eighty percent, which doesn't really help anybody. But we should start developing, um, a consensus if we start using the term affordable housing. Um, and then we also should try to address maybe in a two-tiered or two-layered approach. What about the missing middle? Um, Mary suggested keeping it to two bedrooms or less. That starts to go in that direction or keeping the square footage of them limited and start, um, to make recommendations as to a maximum size of units. Cause there's a missing middle that rarely gets addressed. And I do think the town doesn't like what the state's definition of affordable housing is. So yeah, more specificity is needed here.
Okay, Sue.
So, so I would just say that this is not, um, it didn't, it doesn't use the term affordable housing. It says housing that is affordable enough. Is, um, is not, so it's not speaking to affordability in this particular one. Doesn't mean we couldn't, but it isn't. And it often isn't because of, um, services that are provided and it's very difficult to, um, to bundle affordability and, um, and services, but not impossible and, um, bundle them within one, one structure. But, um, I just wanted to clarify, this is not talking about affordable housing. It's talking about housing that is affordable.
Um, okay.
I would just like to follow up on that comment is exactly what is going on in Chewbacca Road. It's, and I don't think that's what the people that are at the meetings are talking about. If they knew that this bylaw would be used like this to produce million dollar plus condos, they would not have passed this five years ago. So that is my concern. And I think the development that's being proposed on Chewbacca Road, there are no services. It's just luxury townhouses. So I'm concerned about that being produced.
Okay.
This is, this is a site plan reviewable, all this, all the proposals, right? We have final say.
Yeah, it's a special permit.
So it's, you know, we don't like it. We could say no, go ahead.
Yeah, we could always say no. Um, and I want to say one thing, uh, about the home healthcare. The reason Mark put that in is because often, um, full-service assisted living facilities and congregant care facilities are centers for home healthcare programs. So they become the natural uh, place where you can prepare food and, and have nursing services and so forth. That's the only reason it's in there as a, as an objective.
Can I, can I ask Chris or, or somebody on the board? Like, is, so is this being geared towards, um, like an assisted living facility? Does this look too like having a house that maybe has six units in it? I can't, I can't figure out what it's targeting.
So it would be, any of those would be possible under the senior housing special permit. But it's a special permit. So we get to decide whether or not we think it's a good project.
But see, I think in those, those different scenarios are vastly different of perhaps how we would approach it, um, from a land use perspective.
Of course, and we'll have the right to do that in every case.
Um, okay, I, I'd like to bring this discussion to a close, if you don't mind. Um, I'm going to share my screen one more time and, um, I've been taking some notes, um, as to what we're going to do next. These are proposals. Sorry, it's in red. Um, make it black so you can see it. Um, so on residential cluster next steps, we have to get some sort of a definition. And Sue said she pulled together at least some examples, um, table and spatial, sorry. Um, and, um, and then bring, and then, um, I think, uh, maybe we can come back to it after another, and I think, let's say, a reread and discussion. Um, and then on senior housing, um, here are some of the things we talked about thinking about. Maybe we can take a stab at, um, including them. Chris and.
Sure, yeah, of course. They're all, they're all good suggestions.
Yep, um, and we need to have a discussion about the LCD in or out. That's not a thing, that's sort of a yay or nay. Um, I would like to, uh, if somebody, maybe Sue, could you, is she still on? Or, uh, Mary, would you like, oh, you're still here. Um, can you just pull that, somebody, one of you, somebody pull the Hamilton bylaw so we can look at it?
Sure.
Uh, maybe one or two others.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, the merge of the residential cluster goal, you know, goals for open space. That goes in my bulleted list above. Um, so it's next steps. Does that seem like next, uh, good things to do?
Yes, when do, when is, when is the deadline?
Well, I think we're, um, gonna have to have another workshop on these two. For sure. So I don't know what the, I don't, I don't have a date for that yet.
Okay.
So then we're gonna have to decide if we're ready to move this forward in June. Um, my sense of the board is that senior housing is more likely to move forward. Well, let's, let's do this homework first and then have that discussion.
I think it might be helpful to have, to have Mark in this one because he's had a fair amount of experience. So I think he could, would help with this discussion. So make sure.
And I suggest that, uh, everybody read the current residential conservation cluster.
Yes.
Bylaw that's in effect right now.
So I'm gonna suggest that our table have the current, no clusters zoning, this table have, you know, by right red, current residential cluster and then the future, and then some spatial examples. I think that's pretty simple to do. Okay, I'm hearing any other immediate things on these two things? Thank you. Let's, um, last thing on our agenda, um,
I do, I have actually something to say about Mark Bobrowski. I've been trying to rewrite section six, which is very complicated piece of work. It's all about parking and, uh, special districts and all kinds of things. What I'd like to do is create a draft and send it to Mark Bobrowski. And also it, um, has all the things about what makes a special permit, how we conduct special permits and the performance standards of what should be, uh, in a special permit. So I'd like to draft it, run it by Mark Bobrowski to make sure I'm not doing something crazy and then send it to everybody for you to think about. Again, that may not be something we can do for this spring town meeting, but, um, I'd like to give it a shot because the current thing is so messy. So.
Um, could you do that through Sue if you, if we'd say, go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I would definitely do it through Sue.
So you're saying that what we produced already, you don't like the framework for it and you're trying to create a more user-friendly framework?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Well, one of the, there are in the, though, in Bobrowski's thing, he's got different performance standards for different things. And I'm trying to lump them all together into a single set of performance standards that can be applied to any project.
Okay, well, it's an exercise. If you're willing to undertake it, I'm certainly willing to.
Well, I may, I may get halfway through and decide if that we're doing.
Yeah, that was a complicated section to put together, but, um, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you for being willing to do that, Chris. Um, I do think we're making some progress here. Um, uh, along, uh, yeah, section six, Laura?
No, I'm not section six. Before we closed out our definitions, Gary had looked up the grading and I just wondered if we wanted to come back to that.
To that, okay.
Okay.
Um, let me, thank you. Um, one second on that. Um, the, on that same vein of section six, there are several things. We've talked about curb cuts and junk cars and stormwater going to general bylaws. But Chris and I have been identifying a few others that are sort of easy. Oh, nothing's easy, easy. Um, so I'm gonna take a stab at consolidating all of these general bylaw amendments, um, that we have identified to date. As those seem to be actually, because things like, um, where you can park your boat, for example, in that side yard. There may be a lot of debate about that when we open that Pandora's box, but nonetheless, it kind of belongs in general bylaws, I think, rather than in zoning.
Is signage one of those? Would you say, or?
Yeah, signage would be.
I, I think it's signage is probably beyond our capacity for June. I think straight moves are within our capacity at least, but signage should be on our list of things for the future. In my opinion, if you want, if somebody wants to take it on, that's great for June, but, um, we have a big agenda for June right now. If we, um, do get most of these things together. Um, and then the other, other, other is that, um, I hope by the, by the weekend to have some files to Tiffany, maybe sooner than that to, for the website. So we will have, we have a framework on the website already. Um, and, um, so we're making progress there. Okay, Gary.
Where did the language that went on to the website come from?
The language came directly from that, um, document that we shared with the board of selectmen. We did circulate that for comments, got some comments, but, um, can, if you have other comments, please send them to me.
Okay, thanks.
Um, uh, we can improve things. Um, Gary, you'll see, can I make you multiple participants? All right, I think you should be able to share, Gary, of the, uh, height.
Can you see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, this was the wording we had that the pre-existing grade is the average of the elevations taken at twenty-foot intervals around the perimeter of the proposed building where the building will meet the existing grade. It's short and sweet and, um, I support it.
So that is actually a definition for pre-existing grade, not eight.
Right. You have to start off with pre-existing grade to know where your height is. It's thirty-five feet above the pre-existing grade, which is an average dimension, an average elevation.
Okay, so, um, can I, I'm gonna steal a screen back. I've just made a copy of that. Um, I'm gonna steal back from you.
It, I'll stop sharing, whatever.
Okay, so now, um, maybe we add in just, if, if we like that, I, I think that's helpful. And we mer, uh, we just, we change this to pre-existing grade and then we use the definition for that.
Yes, that, that's very simple.
Let me un-green this so you can see. Okay, so this um, would be called pre-existing grade and we, right here.
Well, there should be a separate definition for pre-existing grade, right?
Or it could just be lumped in here as.
It's typically done separately.
And then, um, then we would delete that. Um, and then use this as a pre-existing grade definition.
Right. Yeah, this allows for various building height allowances. Yeah.
Okay, I think that helps.
However.
Yes.
Well, we may be talking about a proposed grade where someone is going to change the grade and then measure the height of the proposed building to the new proposed grade.
It says.
We're evaluating a height, we need to know the difference.
Existing grade, Laura. So it's really, it's before they changed the site, the topo.
And this actually came about, it's in the, also in the Earth Maruva bylaw, I believe, or something, because, uh, there was a, this was like, there was like a town meeting thing about this because somebody blew off the top of a hill and then, um, then said there, you know, thirty-five feet were from the new grade.
Right, but we want to understand that. I mean, there's a difference between existing grades. It's a little bit redundant now, pre-existing grade of the existing ground level. That's a bit redundant and confusing to my mind. But and I know this is a definition, but the, the height of a twenty-story house on a hill is definitely different from a height of a twenty-story house after you flatten the hill.
Right, well, what, this first sentence should be modified from what you've got, Sarah. It should say the height of a building is the vertical distance measured from the pre-existing grade to the highest point of the roof.
About just from the grade, from the grade to the roof. That's how you measure the height of something. It's not on yesterday's grade. It's.
I don't agree. No. No, it's got to be from pre-existing grade because you, you're buying, you're taking a lot and it's got a severe slope. You have to know how high you can build your building. On Spiro Kill, there was a big law, there was a lawsuit because somebody was going to cut off the neighbor's view from across the street. They, our definition was, was inadequate. So they ended up fighting over, over each other, with each other over it, and there's no need for that. So you, you look at the pre-existing grade and you decide where the, um, where the, um, the average of that is, and you go up thirty-five feet and there's no way to vary from that.
So I think that the, the question is that you blow the top of a hill off, then are you allowed to build, able, you reduce the hill by thirty-five feet. So now your building could be seventy feet.
Right, the height of a building is its relationship to the grade that it is sitting upon. So whatever that grade is, when you're done building a house, that is the height of the house or whatever.
You're limited to two and a half stories, so.
Right, but.
Sure, but how you define grade is not not the existing conditions before you did construction and you measure against that. It's the condition of the finished grade to the structure that you're measuring.
I, I, I'm sorry, I disagree because you could bring in fill and you could change all the topography completely. It's, it's about.
You can, and then you level off a place and you, you grade the fill there and you take a building and the building is X number of feet taller than the finished grade.
Yeah, I think we're trying to put two different definitions together here. I think pre-existing grade is for another, for another use, not to, not to determine the height of a building. I do think the average of the elevations at twenty-foot intervals around the perimeter is where, is how you get to that, mean, to the mean grade. Um, but I, I agree, you can't, um.
Why don't we just call it grade?
Grade, grade, delete existing.
I don't, to me, this seems so standard. I'm not sure why we're, we're having trouble with this. You can't buy a piece of property and bring a whole bunch of fill and raise the height of it and then apply for a permit to put your house on it.
Again, we're not regulating, we're not regulating, we're just defining. And so the, the height of something. Again, we're not regulating, we're not regulating, we're just defining, and so the height of something is relative to its grade. So if you measure the height of a building, it's reg, it's measured against its finished grade. Not, not the hill before you blew it off or anything else, it's just a definition. It doesn't make any sense to say pre-existing grade or.
And I think the more likely thing is that somebody blows the top of a hill off and then the the they could be allowed the, the amount they cut off plus thirty-five feet on, if it was two and a half stories of big ballrooms, whatever it is. Um, can I make a suggestion on this one that we um, go with this change of grade? And um, I think Gary, I'm I'm gonna, I can't delete pre-existing here because it's a screenshot. Um, and um, we continue to, I'll put it on a little bit on the list to think about as we go forward.
Um, can you?
Here is to get it to the public.
Can we bring this back to the building inspector, the the verbiage we have here and have them comment on?
Sure.
Yeah, but I wonder if maybe the simple answer is that um, we add some language to what the height requirements are, not to the definition.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, so the actions here are to um, uh, use this definition bring to the building inspector and look at the height requirements, height requirements to see what the applicability is.
Yeah, I think, I do think, I think it's the mean grade that we're defining and not the pre-existing grade in that case.
Yeah, I think it's just the grade, okay, so. We may keep that in.
Except I think we mean the average and not the mean. Do you agree, Sue, if we're taking twenty points in dividing?
Right, it could be the average rate.
Okay.
Although ask the, I don't know, you might ask the building inspector if he, if he gets rid of any, any high valleys or big peaks.
Oh, yeah, that happens. Okay, I'm gonna um, close this out. Thank you, um, Gary for that and we'll continue that. Um, alright, the last thing on our agenda is comments on the the comments to DHCD. Um, and and so right now, um, there are two sets, Christine and Mary both edited the one that I put in the folder for tonight. And uh, Sue and Laura edited the one that I put in the folder for last Monday. So my, I think we have, um, that, I think it's solvable. But I think that there are a larger set of philosophical distinctions. And I'm not sure we're gonna have consensus is when I review the comments. Pardon me?
Are we skipping EDUs?
Oh, uh, well, uh, we are going to tonight, but I'll, we'll come back to that. Okay, thank you. Um, I didn't have the agenda. Well, Christina, make sure we come back to that. So I I looked at the comments, I will put them both in the folder for next Monday. And maybe somebody can try to put them together, but it's, uh, deadline is March thirty-first. And I'm not sure that we have consensus when I look at the two sets of comments. That's mine. So we have um, philosophically, I think, uh, we have two very different approaches to that. Set of rules, so.
I have something to say about this. One of them is that everybody can make comments to the DHCD. There's a little, you go to their site and you can upload your comments. So whether or not the planning board does anything with this, individually, I encourage everybody to submit comments.
Yep. So it's my opinion, I'll tell, that we leave it at that. Um, and that we, you can use the the comments that are in there as a, but if somebody wants to make a proposal or take another edit and try to get a majority vote to represent the planning board, that's fine too.
Can I ask who drafted this first version?
Excuse me?
Who drafted this? Who drafted the first version? Who who wrote this?
Uh, Chris and Sue helped edit some comments. I I had suggested that we do it to see if we had consensus on some topics. So um, the topics, see, I have them both open. Um, so the topics that Chris um, had was maybe, Chris, you should say what the topics were. There's a one-size-fits-all philosophy about scale. Um, a formula to um, about incentive versus carrot versus stick kinds of comments. And then the issue around um, a definitive number of potential units, regardless of current population, fifteen units per acre, regardless of the town size. Um, and I think one of the comments is that um, and that there was a comment, that that is my comment that some of the state, which is a comment I will may be making into the site, which is um, when we built the schools, MSC, MSBA told us what our populations were gonna be. And we could not get reimbursement for larger populations. And now, um, you know, the um, so that that is a true statement, for sure. Um, so whether that, how that actually uh, manifests itself in the um, uh, application of this zoning is hard for me to un-understand exactly. Because I think it's not as dire as, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's a bad thing or a even something that we can fairly easily comply with. So um, so anyway, that's, uh, let's see, the other.
So Sarah, I have a couple of questions, comments. Are we as a town getting any data so we can, as as a board? I, because I would say a large percentage of communities' planning boards are responding. And I think we should um, attempt to do that as a planning board. I think our community is looking for that and I think that would um, be beneficial. But I would like to understand, and maybe this is what's happening tomorrow night at the public forum, that we have actual numbers of what we're dealing with. Um, you know, how many current units do we have within that half mile? I mean, I feel like we're we're commenting, but you know, we're kind of potentially guessing at some things. Um, I don't know if FinCom's weighing in to do any financial analysis. I mean, that's all offshoots, but I think, you know, I think just because we might not have a consensus doesn't make sense to not do something as a letter to the state.
I looked at the comments, I just think it's gonna be a hard letter to write.
I have some.
Yeah, Laura.
Also, Mary's done. Mary, are you done speaking? Okay. Um, yeah, I I added quite a few comments to that. I think if we decide to write something as a board and we may not get to consensus, I feel strongly that we need to stay away from editorializing. We should not be using words like punishment, threat, um, you know, something that we're, is being forced upon us. This is not being forced upon us, this is a choice. But I believe completely that this is a question of equity and inclusion. So we allow, as do many towns, single-family housing by right. Every kind of multifamily housing requires a special permit. All this is asking us to do is define a district with all the controls that we want to see to promote good development that allows multifamily housing by right. I think it's equity. I think if we don't support that, I will never sign a letter that says we don't support multifamily housing by right. I think it's totally exclusionary. So I I believe that we can make this a good thing for our town. I believe that there are financial reasons to strongly consider doing it. I think it would be fiscally irresponsible, frankly, to turn away from it and then turn down this, the grants and the interstate money. But I also just believe it's the right thing to do and it's an opportunity. We have a historic core of downtown, which is densely developed, which you couldn't build according to current zoning. And this is asking us to take a look at creating contextual development. If you read the FAQs, there's a lot in there about, you know, wanting to put it in the, in the planning board seat to make sure that it it fits with the town and the scale and the goals of the of of each town. I think the problem area of it is that forty-nine, forty-nine percent of the hundred and seventy-five communities, I think it's something like seventy-nine communities are too small um, to be defined by the current capacity. And so it gives you this seven-hundred-and-fifty-unit number, which is just a placeholder, it's got an asterisk after it. And we need to understand how that really calculates out. But I do not want to see us come out with a, with a statement that uses this as a threat because I think we'll turn the rest of the town against it. And there go our goals for affordable housing and diversity of housing that we've all said we want it in the course of the master plan. So start up, stand on the soapbox, but I I feel really strongly about that, this issue.
Very good, Laura. Thank you for saying that. Um, I do want to say something about some statistics here. Every lot that's bigger than six thousand square feet in the general district is allowed a three-family house. But there aren't three family houses on every lot, so just because it's allowed by zoning doesn't mean it's gonna happen. And in fact, uh, it's kind of an indication that zoning is not, it's not like a master plan where we're going to be creating housing by changing the zoning. The second thing is that that those three units in every lot in the downtown almost get us to this zoning requirement from the state. So it's not really onerous, it's some tweaking. And I think if we really thought about it and thought about some development parcels in the downtown where some really thoughtfully planned multifamily housing could be built with plenty of parking and a parking ramp or whatever, maybe funded by the state, that we could create a much more vibrant downtown and support the businesses and provide uh, housing for people who are looking for it um, with much smaller units and less urban sprawl. So yeah, I'm, I I think this, as Laura says, it's an opportunity that we should be pursuing, not fighting.
Perhaps we can take the comments that we received from Mary, Christina, Laura, Gary. Thank you, everybody, for taking time and boil them down to comments about the regulations themselves, not about their merits necessarily, but where they're in conflict potentially with other. You know, with sort of, there are a few things that are sort of not terribly common sense about them, as I understand, and you guys are more further along than I am on this. Um, and simply limit our planning board comments to comments on the regulations, not necessarily their merits, but their clarity or their uh, sort of um, applicability to small towns. There was, somebody made a comment that small towns do not have internal staff or expertise to undertake some of these things. And I I don't know who wrote that, but um, that we might be something we could all agree on and find things where we have common agreement um, and not um, comment on what Manchester is gonna do about this, because that's premature, so.
Eric, can you just clarify, I only saw one document, where were comments posted on another document?
So there was a, there was a, it was um, posted for the last meeting, we didn't have time to discuss it. So I will put the two versions into, I will put the the version from last meeting into tonight's meeting notes. Actually, I'll put them both, I'll put them both into next meeting so that we have them. But um, and um, so that you can see them, okay?
I would, I would also, because again, I only saw the one, so I don't know where the other one is, but.
Somehow, I copied it and take Laura's comments.
Okay, I would say that um, if planning board members are making a comment, a plan, another planning board member can't comment on the po-comment, that's an open meeting violation. Um, so that's a conversation and that's not allowed.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, can I make a suggestion that maybe um, Chris and Sue take another stab at the letter to see if there's common elements and that we're common, that the comments from the planning board focus on the regulations or clarity and not um, editorializing what what it would be like in Manchester.
What we could do is summarize, we could summarize people's comments and say, some people said this and some people said that and put them all together. We could agree on what people said.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask if if uh, Chris, maybe you're willing to take another stab at it with.
Yeah, sure.
Then we'll put it in for next meeting. I will um, clearly label, I think we already have a folder for next meeting. I will clearly label the two versions for you all to look through. And then there will be a new version, um, ma- maybe simpler bulleted list of things where there's agreement and can, and encourage everybody to come tomorrow night and think a little bit more about this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Sarah, I I wonder if um, just from administrative point of view, this, like many other projects, will go over more than one meeting. So rather than just keep putting it in additional, trying to get everything moved into additional meetings, do it, maybe we should just create a file for.
But I am.
Forty-eight.
We do have to get in by the thirty-first, though, is that right? We have a deadline?
Yes.
Yes, but put it in for next meetings, then it's easy to find. I do think that, consider, sorry, and then we can move them into uh, it later. Good idea.
Yeah, we're gonna try to tackle this at the same one as the public forum on the LCD.
I'm hoping we can get it.
Oh, yeah, so.
I can't imagine we can um, uh, edit a letter together tonight.
I agree.
So, um, accessory dwelling units, thank you, everybody, for your good thoughts on this. And hopefully, it's helping us to think through this. Um, last item on the agenda is the accessory dwelling units. Um, we heard from the Board of Selectmen that um, there were some addition, we had voted actually to move that version. It's on the website to a public hearing, but we heard a number of pretty good questions from the Board of Selectmen, particularly around the number being twenty, what about existing units and how would they be handled? In addition, in the issues document, there were a number of issues just listed. So I combined all those in that um, notes from the Board of Selectmen document that I posted there. Um, and I think that we don't have time, I want to just bring that to your attention and suggest that we're gonna have to have a workshop on, that's gonna have to be for another night. So um, unless anybody really wants to talk about it tonight. Um, oh, the other piece that Mary had asked, and I think Sue was in the process of doing, was to take the comments that we heard in the accessory dwelling units discussion from a year or so ago and put them in that same document of comments on the ADU, and then we'll have to make some proposed changes and go through it again. So I think the next step is to take those comments and maybe Gary and Chris can hammer through another version of that.
Maybe Gary, Gary.
Sarah. Sarah.
Yes.
Um, what, what we're thinking of doing is taking those comments and discussing it with the zoning housing study group that we set up and uh, work out some language that makes sense and then bring it to the planning board because that, hopefully, we'd be do everybody's homework for them that way. Um, if things need clarifying, we'll clarify them and if things, issues need addressing, we'll propose addressing them. So it's, we better have something written, so we're gonna try to meet this weekend and anytime you want to talk about it after that, we could, you know, send, just send the text out and it can be on SharePoint.
Okay, so there, you had a group that had met for the original, the um, ADU and you're gonna ha-go back to them with these comments.
Yeah, with everything the selectman said, some of it, they, their questions, they just didn't read the law to understand some of it. So maybe some clarifying needs to be made, but yeah, we worked on it for at least a year and a half.
Okay, and so do we have any um, ca-account of how many accessory dwelling units we currently think we have?
Uh, no, because they are not counted, accessory dwelling units are counted similarly with two-family units. Um, so it's a, an assessing, all we can use is assessors' numbers. So we do not have, I would love to, I wish we did, um, but there are just not the numbers that are credible or reliable in any sense of the word. I've gone around it every which way with assessing department to try to figure out how we could get to the numbers. But I don't see in. how we could get to the numbers, but I don't see, and she didn't see, that office doesn't see a path forward for figuring that out, frankly.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly. Um, Gary, um, make sure that you look at the, um, the comments that I shared, there were some in there for ADUs from previous meetings too. So the Excel sheet, uh, it had comments on all of the changes that we were making or that we presented at that workshop, but it also, and some of them were, quite a few of them were for the ADUs, so if you could just look at that and take those back to your, to your group as well. I think some of them have been already addressed, but just in case there are some outliers there.
Okay, great. Um, any other, um, items tonight?
Yeah, I got a couple of items. Um, number one, on our planning website, it says February, for the February 28th LCD study, hearing, um, so that needs to be changed. And when you open it up, it has the language, and I want to make sure that the public, when they click on that, sees the current language that we're proposing at our hearing for next week. So can that, can that be changed for the, and say the March 28th public hearing instead of the February 28th public hearing?
I will call Tiffany in the morning.
Okay, and can the language?
I already talked about that, so, but anyway, if it hasn't been changed yet.
It has not been changed. And, um, so just, I mean, I'm going to lock up the agenda Wednesday for next week. So far, we have the, we'll, we'll reconvene on the curb cut and the Greenbrier, um, um, A and R, which Gary made a comment to us on. I believe the applicant is bringing in a lawyer. I don't know if that's the case or not, but that's what I had heard. And then we have a public.
Sarah, did you say Wednesday? Is it a Wednesday hearing? I heard Wednesday.
No, next Monday, it'll be.
Monday, okay.
Monday, the 28th, this is all the 28th, um, and so then, at seven, we'll have the public hearing, which will, um, you know, our job is to listen to the public and then I, um, will close the public hearing after all the comments are heard, and then we will, uh, vote any changes that we hear from the public that night. I'm expecting to do that. And then, um, any extra time we have after that, hopefully we will, will continue this, um, lively discussion, uh, Sarah, on any small items we can close up, continuing on this, um, recodification effort. So that's kind of what I have for the agenda, not very heavy next, next week, except for the, uh, public hearing.
Okay, what we might do is, um, a similar issues thing on section four. I think we've got two little things that we can kind of close up on those.
Okay, and then you would want to, I noticed you had written, you want to schedule some more, um, bonus meetings, um, ahead and, um, I guess we'll play that by ear.
Yeah, I have to look at the calendar. We had originally said to have a public hearing on this on 11, uh, April 11th and 12th, and Chris and I felt like it should probably be soon after the town meeting to not avoid too much confusion. So, uh, we're going to redo the dates for that.
Yeah, we're also going to screw up the Board of Appeals if we're not careful.
Right.
Okay. Um, I see that Mary has her hand up and so does Sue. Mary?
Thanks, I just had a question. Uh, Chris put a email in the folder saying that, um, cell signaling had presented to FinCom, so we didn't need to. I was concerned about that. I think the planning board, if we're looking for the FinCom input, should do it as a planning board, not as an applicant giving information to them.
Did you attend the FinCom meeting?
I got there at the tail end of that presentation. I didn't get on till, I don't know, eight o'clock or something. So I, I heard part of it, but not all of it.
Okay, you won't have a, will you have a report for us at our next meeting or no?
Just on the part that I was there, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you, Mary. We'll send back with them.
And, uh, Ms. Brown?
Um, I just want to make sure that I've got some dates, um, even if they're tentative and they may be, so that we can get Mark to the, um, to the meetings that he should, that can, he can be helpful at, so, um, I might bug you, Sarah, to see, to, to get a tentative plan out there.
Okay, we'll get your dates soon as we, uh, post them on the calendar, maybe. Mr. Gilbert?
Um, I asked the Board of Selectmen, I, I'm not sure if I asked a planning board, but I asked the Board of Selectmen if they could have Town Council look at which of our bylaw changes would actually interface with, um, the zoning board of appeals. I, not, it, it's only a small amount of issues, I think. But, uh, is there any movement on that or, because, you know, it, it, it could mean some applications could be held up, but not all their applications. And, um, I wanted to see Town Council to weigh in on that. And the other thing was for Sue, did Bobrowski get back to us with the second round of responses on the questions about A, um, A and Rs?
I haven't seen that second round, so let me, um, remind him. Let me remind him.
What was the first round? I'm really confused here. Are we not going through the chair and asking for advice? A little lost.
Yeah, Gary, could you, could you send me an email on what you just said? What you wanted to follow up on?
Yeah, we, we talked about it at a previous meeting and, um, agreed to send some questions about A and Rs to Mark. He gave some responses. A little bit of it was not completely crystal clear, so, um, I commented on his comments and Sue's going, doing the go-between. And we'll report back when we, when we're done, when it's more clear, so.
Yeah, and then on the question of going to Town Council, I think we have to go through Ron on that. And we don't yet know exactly what we're bringing in June, so I think it's premature to ask the question about which ones affect the ZBA. Um, and I think Town Council generally were, will review warrant articles, um, as well, so I think we should get, figure out soon, and I'm, I think we're getting close, to figure out what our total package is going to be for June, and then we can through Ron, ask any questions of council. And there may be some, there may be a, a collection of questions that we want to have them review, so.
Well, yeah, they changed, they changed their policy on Town Council, the selectmen, so, uh, you know, we can send our questions to me, I'll get them to Greg and Greg can contact. We don't have to get any approval from the selectmen anymore. We should just go to Greg and Greg can either answer them if he knows the answer or go to Town Council. That's, that's the new policy.
Consolidate our any questions.
Correct.
Questions, let's make sure, we're not really, I wasn't speaking on behalf of the board, I was just saying the selectmen should be concerned. They should ask Town Council on behalf of the zoning board. It doesn't have anything to do with us, really.
It's like draft reg, they don't have draft zoning changes yet to respond to that.
Good point.
I have a question, um. I, I think there was a memo about the A and R, so I would like to see what's circulating, that's being tossed back and forth. So if you could share that with the board, that would be great.
Yeah, no problem.
And the last thing, uh, we got a note back from the Attorney General, um, is Sharon still on?
Yes.
Yes, so, um, they have, they have tentatively blessed the zoning, uh, but because we didn't send it to the, um, regional planning.
And DHCD.
DHCD, that there is a 21-day waiting period, uh, for them to make comments. If they don't make comments, the, the thing is certified. So that would be April, I think Sharon would, correct me if I'm wrong, like April 11th?
I guess, I'll, I'll count out the 21 days, but we also have to, um, on the Form 299, it has to be posted, so I will speak with Diane in the morning and her and I will get together to post the warrant and everything from that meeting. It has to be posted for 14 days.
Good.
Okay.
So, that's the latest stuff.
So the, I had a panic attack about that this weekend, but I checked and our proposed LCD changes are independent of the renumbering that we did in November, so regardless.
Well, it looks like we're going to make it in time anyway, but.
Yeah, but it doesn't really matter.
And I, I got a form from where I worked before that was very good, that lists everywhere that the, um, hearing notice went to, and that goes in with all of the information that goes to the Attorney General's office, so this won't happen again.
Right.
Right. Okay, anybody have anything else?
Um.
Mary?
I'm just jumping around, but Sarah, you had mentioned the earth removal bylaw. Do we have a, a list of what's in for June and what's not, like, so the earth removal is not, you know, the, I was trying to.
The memo that I did for last week is the best list. Um, and I do, um, actually print that out and I have my, I was going to wave it, demonstrate, but you get the idea. I actually have, um, my own version that I've been updating, so I plan to update it for myself, um, and can share that for you next, next Monday, the list of where we are, because I think we have some decisions on, um, some of these things, so, um, and then.
Is your list just what we're including? I don't see what we're excluding.
It, it's a list of what we're working on.
Okay, so anything else we're saying we're not bringing forth?
Well, there's another section that I will update, I'll update it for you, for, for all of us, um, for the next, I'll update that memo for the next meeting. I think my, my goal is to try to keep that memo, um, for our regular meetings updated, so everybody knows where we are on moving these things forward, on reviewing them, so.
Okay, thanks.
Special thanks to Sarah and Chris and Gary and all you for tonight.
Everybody did a good job. Doing it, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yeah.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio? Chair vote yes. See you next week.
All right, I know it's turning.
Ah, see you tomorrow night, sorry. And at the curb cut, right, curb cut and.
And at the curb cut, right.
Right, forgot all that.
Laura's going to not be, may not make, make it.
I, I think I'll be able to make, I'm trying to shift things around. I'll try to make the curb cut.
Good.
Thank you.
Other in the.
I love a good curb cut. Okay.
I see. Bye.